Good evening, everyone. We'd like to start the city council meeting, the hour of 6:00 PM, having come and gone. We'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Here.
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 Williams.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
Here. We do have six members answering the roll, and we are prepared. We do have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Would everyone please rise for the pleasure lesions?
At this time, I'd like to invite up Pastor Stokes to offer a word of prayer as we start
this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Let us pray. Our God and our Father, we thank you for this, another opportunity to be alive and to be well, to be kept, to be covered. We thank you for these, all the persons who have elected our mayor. We thank you for these department heads. We speak peace and prosperity to them and their families, and we thank you for keeping your eyes upon us. Your word declares to us that we should trust you with all of our hearts, lean not to our own understanding in all of our ways, acknowledge you, and you would direct our paths. We ask for your wisdom tonight and your guidance as we go forward, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Before we go to public comment, I'd like to invite our fire chief up for announcement with Mabus. Unless, Chief, you want me to? I know that's happening this weekend.
Yeah, I believe that everyone should have gotten this through their emails, but this is just a reminder that this coming Saturday, as you all know, we're part of a Mabus 24 group. It now consists of 23 departments. There are three departments that just joined us, being Mattson, Park Forest, and Richardson Park, along with the existing 20. But this is just kind of a showcase. We're one of the few, actually there's only one other agency that has their own Mabus garage, and this is located in Homewood, Illinois. This is where all the specialty items come from. So if a dive team comes out of that Mabus garage, hazmat comes out of there, trench rescue, technical rescue, all comes out of there. That's specialized equipment, so something that we're very proud of, and this is going to be an open house, so you guys can see it firsthand. You've also are familiar with the CPAD program. That's where we have the physical agility test for firefighters. That's based out of that location, so you'll see it firsthand as far as all the stations go, what's involved with the CPAD. So this is just a way for all the specialty teams, where you're able to come up to them, talk to them, find out exactly what's involved, and Cal City will be there representing that program as well. So if you have any information or questions, please let me know. Thank you. And that's this Saturday from 10:00 to noon. Thank you.
You know, been mayor of Calumet City for three years. When I got this job, the city had 1,400 abandoned homes in Calumet City that led to us having the perfect storm in Calumet City with our taxes. Last administration didn't do anything about it. These 1,400 abandoned homes are here now. We have to have a solution for these homes. Residents stood up at this meeting and asked us and demanded us to do something about the taxes and do something about our city. We had a meeting about taxes last night, and a proposal that I presented to the council. There are questions about the proposal. There are some council members who emailed questions to me, emailed to attorneys, and those questions will be answered in open session, because there's no more hiding now about our community, and no more hiding about what we're facing. The time is now for Calumet City, and we're not playing, and I'm not playing. I'm demanding that this city council take up this tax proposal and pass this tax proposal. I'm gonna put, call a special meeting for next Wednesday, and I double dog dare any alderman to vote against this. Any alderman that votes against this, we're gonna make sure that the residents understand that we're in a situation, that time is now for Calumet City. Other communities have gone backwards. When I came in, we inherited a budget of maybe 26 million to 29 million. I'm sure we'll get those correct numbers. Now we're at a budget of 53 million. My goal was to provide this town with finances and resources. We've gotten nearly $78 million in grant money. $78 million in grant money, and we have not spent the grant money. We have not done our first-time home buyers program. The time is now, and we can't wait to change our community, and we can't help wait to help our residents. Many of the questions that were asked about the tax proposal, and I challenge any alderman to bring a tax proposal and a solution. If you don't like my tax plan and my plan for residents, submit another proposal in writing that's gonna get our taxpayers the relief that they demand, because our taxpayers are demanding relief. I don't care if it's $500 or $1,000. Let the taxpayers decide what's good for us. So next week, I am calling a special meeting, and we're gonna request that the aldermen support the plan to make sure that we keep our community thriving and we keep going together. I am not satisfied with what's going on in our community, and as much as I am getting frustrated, I have to remain calm, because again, I understand that we have a goal for our community. We have an economic plan for our community, and I'm not gonna be satisfied. I make $24,000 as mayor of Calumet City. So if you didn't know that, residents, I make $24,000 a year as mayor of Calumet City. And yet, I'm here every day to make sure that we keep our community and our city going. I'm not gonna be satisfied with making excuses why we can't pass a tax plan for our residents. So if I have to go door-to-door to make sure that our residents understand that this tax plan, or if aldermen have another solution, bring it forward. Stop with the excuses, and let's make sure that we get this done for our residents. So again, we're gonna invite all the residents to the meeting next week. We're gonna present the tax plan. The questions that the alderman asks, we'll make sure we get them answered. But every question that the alderman asks will be answered and asked in open session. We're not gonna hide behind emails and hide behind not giving the residents the answers and you blaming the city. I stated before that Calumet City has not raised taxes in four years, but yet there's residents in the community that continue wanting to blame the city for the high taxes in our community when we know that County Assistant Fritz Kegge is responsible for that, and we're not gonna be satisfied. The residents stood there and said that they want the city to fight for them. Well, guess what? That goes both ways. We want the residents to fight as well. I introduced a proposal to a state representative that some people think cannot pass. Well, guess what? There are other representatives who are supporting this plan, there are other senators that are supporting this plan, and we gotta do something. This council demanded that we go to Springfield and change the laws with our tax code, and we'll do that. But again, we need our residents to help fight for us, just as we're gonna fight for you. So we're gonna announce the meeting. By law, we have to post that on Monday. It'll be on Wednesday, and we're gonna invite residents to come up and talk about the tax plan. But we're gonna make sure we get it done, and we're gonna make sure we continue to fight. So I thank everyone who has engaged us. I thank everyone that came to the property tax seminar, but the time for talking has gone, and we gotta get something done for our residents. Small or large, we have to do it. My proposal in Springfield requires a process, and part of that process is that we're gonna ask that Springfield to take 10% of video gaming terminal fees, and for townships, it'll be Bloom, Calumet, Bremen, Rich for five years. The bill creates a task force to review the taxing bodies and the cost-saving measures, and the property tax relief that will go to every community in those townships. So it's not just for Calumet City, it's for the townships and the broader community as well. We can't just put Calumet City in here and expect it to pass. So I'm gonna ask all the residents to not only support this plan, but if you don't like this plan, say it. Come up with solutions of how we can make this plan better, or how we can do a different plan, but the whole not supporting the plan because it's my plan is not gonna work. So again, we're gonna present through Alderman Gardner and through the council, a first-time home buyers program that will look to get these 1,400 houses back on the tax rolls. We've started acquiring some properties, but that's not the entire solution to solving what ails our community. So again, we'll make sure that everyone understands, fully understands the plan, and fully understands what we're trying to do for our city. We can't wait another three years to do this. The program that I'm proposing is a one-year, one-time fix. It's up to Springfield to help us with the other part of this. We know that. So again, I wanna make sure that everyone understands we're gonna call this meeting on Wednesday, August 14th, and we'll expect or ask everyone to come to the meeting. At this time, I'll go to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on any items on the agenda? If so, can you please step to the mic? Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on any item on this agenda?
Good evening, Mayor, everyone. I just wanted to ask for a copy of your proposal, if I may.
We'll get that to you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on public, or in public comment? If so, please step to the mic. Seeing none, we will move on to item five on the agenda, approval of minutes. The clerk has sent the minutes to everyone that details the minutes. Are there any corrections on the minutes? If there are no corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 You say yes.
We'll let the record reflect.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Williams is here at 6:20 PM, and he votes yes on the approval of the minutes. Number six on the agenda, reports of standing committees. Public Works, Alderman Smith.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Promising Licensing, Alderman Patton.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health Education and Welfare, Alderman Navarrete.
Nothing this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinance and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Utilities, Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, very briefly. I just wanna bring to the public's attention, city council on Monday, July 29th, passed the ordinance for the fiscal year, ordinance appropriation for the fiscal year 2024-25 budget, and the ordinance establishing salaries and fringe benefits of appointed officials, supervisor personnel, and other full and part-time employees not covered by a collective bargaining agreement for the city of Calumet City. That budget also reflects zero increase to the tax levy. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. City Council Reports. Alderman Navarrete.
I apologize, Mayor.
We have first ward report. I apologize.
Yes, City Council reports.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that the First Ward Town Hall will be held August 28th, the last Wednesday of the month, at the VFW Post 8141 at 664 Hirsch Avenue, right off the corner of Hirsch and Pulaski here, up the road. Again, it's August 28th at 6:00 PM. And then I also want to remind residents to support the Jesus Shepherd of Soul Festival that will take place next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. That'll be at the Our Lady of Knock Church Worship Site. Hopefully Alderman Patton has that address. I don't know that address off the top of my head, but maybe when we get... 497 163rd Street. Thank you. Again, that's next week, Jesus Shepherd of Souls Fest, 40-day festival of music, food, drinks, and Little Kitty Carnival and games as well. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Second Ward, Alderwoman Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, first and foremost, to all of the residents, especially Second Ward residents, who have helped me celebrate all 90 days of my birthday. It's still going on, so you still have time to join in on the festivities. Thank you to everyone who attended the Vision of We Community Day last week. A huge thank you to our Calumet City Fire Department. What we were able to see, and what the Fire Department doesn't often get acknowledged for, is the engagement of the community with our young people and our young adults. There were young adults that came in and they asked our Fire Department, how do we become or enlist in this profession? How can you guide us? And they guided them. They gave them the direction on what to do, broke down what they did in their daily job, the differences in what they offer, even with being a paramedic. It was amazing to see the fire engine that we've waited for so long to be built actually out there. It was worth every dollar and worth all the wait. It is a thing of beauty, and so I do thank the Fire Department for that community engagement. Thank you to Ty Solid Foundation for your giveaways and support. The Ownership Club, Wanda Smith and her family, thank you. We have coming up Saturday, August 10th, from noon to 2:00 PM. The Smith family has opened up their huge backyard again to the Second Ward Block Meeting, 1424 Pulaski Road. It is on the corner of Pulaski and Hoxie. We will have several guests there. We will review, we will have Danielle Winston, our paralegal and tax analyst. Dani will be there to walk us through some things regarding our property taxes. We also will review the communications between the Second Ward and the Department of Justice regarding our tax claim. We have been put in the right direction from the Department of Justice, as well as the Housing and Urban Development Department. We have taken our claim on federal level. While we welcome any and all resources and help that can come from the municipal government, as well as the county government and state government, there is some oversight that's needed on the state level that can only be provided on the federal level. Until the state restructures how they finance schools, we, the homeowners, will be on the hook for it, and we are paying 65% of our bill to schools. So that's something that we will discuss. We will also go through our list for the Second Ward, what needs to be completed, what is still outstanding regarding alley grading, regarding lights that are needed to be installed. So please come out August 10th, that is this Saturday, from noon to 2:00 PM. Bring your cheer. We will have, refreshments will be served. August 17th, from noon to 4:00, is our inaugural Vision of We Awards Brunch, and that is held at the VFW 664 Hirsch. We are honoring 26 community heroes, people that do good right here in our neighborhood. The VFW is also being honored. We are honoring six individuals with the President's Lifetime Achievement Award. So please come out and support. Tickets are $35, and that includes a plated meal. We have, we're honoring with the President Lifetime Achievement Award, Mr. Sefransky from the Second Ward. He was just honored with the Honors Flight, where veterans take the flight from Chicago to Washington, DC. He is a decorated Vietnam veteran, and we are proud to have Mr. Phan as a resident in our ward. August 31st, we are partnering with New Life Bible Church of Calumet City for their back-to-school event. It begins at 11:00 AM. The medical van will be there for any child that needs an updated medical assessment or record for school, back-to-school. The mobile dentist will be there. We will have school supplies, food, fun, and family. I am asking that you text or email your registration for the event, and here's why. Just like last year, we had 1,900 kids show up, and we didn't have 1,900 book bags, but we made sure later we delivered whatever was needed. So you can text 708-586-4990, leave your name, your address, best contact information, and if you have multiple children, list the names of the children and their ages, so we can make sure they get what they need. As we get it in, we will deliver it to you. If you would prefer to email it, you can email me at monet, M-O-N-E-T, at alderwomanwilson.com. The best method, though, is text, because we have six interns who will get that message and create a spreadsheet. So 708-586-4990. Should you need me, please feel free to call me or text me at that number, 708-586-4990, and I will do my best to assist. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Third Ward, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. This past Monday, we held the third and fourth ward monthly town hall meeting. I just wanna thank all the residents that came out. I also wanna thank the Police Department, Public Works, and Inspection Services for coming and giving information to the residents and answering all of those questions. There will be no meeting in September, as we will be doing the annual block-to-block meetings. Each block, just wait to hear from my office. We're gonna put those communications out in the next couple weeks of when we will be on your block. We just encourage residents to bring your lawn chairs, come out and meet us on those particular street corners for those meetings. The next monthly town hall meeting is October, the first Monday of October, again at Downey Park, 6:30. Also, August 17th at noon, the third and fourth ward is doing our seventh annual back-to-school picnic. We wanna encourage all the residents to come out, bring all the kids. We're gonna have rides, giveaway book bags, school supplies, haircuts. There'll be gaming trucks, live performances. You will be able to dunk your Alderman and many more things. It's gonna be a good family event, starting at noon to 4:00. Again, Downey Park, that's 300 Jeffrey. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth Ward, Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanna share the same sentiment as Alderman Tillman. August 17th, for third and fourth ward, back-to-school picnic, and there will be free haircuts, school supplies, numerous amounts of vendors, food, fun, and entertainment. Pace Bus is hiring, so if anyone's looking for gainful employment or know anyone, please contact the office, and I will give the number and email at the end of this report. I too wanna thank the residents for coming out to the meeting this past Monday. Your concerns will be addressed as timely as possible.
This coming Saturday, at Covenant Church in South Holland on 154th Street, there will be an expungement seminar, so please, if you know anyone that needs to take advantage of it, or you would like to participate, please contact the office at 708-212-2240, or 708-891-8194, or you can email me at rwilliams@calumetcity.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quick, I'd like to just encourage the Fifth Ward residents to continue to call my office with issues, 708-891-8195. Also, my office is in the process of coordinating the Fifth Ward Fun Fest. If you should have any concerns, or if you wanna volunteer, please reach out to my office again, 708-891-8195. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Sixth Ward, Alderman.
Thank you. I just want to quickly address the matter that the mayor spoke about in his mayor's report, because unfortunately, there's a meeting being scheduled next Wednesday. This'll be the second meeting in a row that's scheduled for a vote on this matter, that's being scheduled at a time and date that the administration knows I am hosting events in my ward with residents, so I will not be able to be there to attend. So I will just briefly make a few remarks about this proposal right now, even though it's premature, because the questions that I did submit via email have not been answered yet. But I would like to say that three years ago, well, let me back up, seven years ago when I got on this city council, if I had questions about something that was proposed by the former mayor, I would ask them right here on the city council floor, in front of the public and in front of the camera. Three years ago, I was accused of grandstanding for doing that very thing. I was asked to submit my questions about items on the agenda in advance, in writing, via email, to the mayor, the attorneys, the department heads, whoever, so that things could be worked out ahead of time, to avoid looking like I was trying to embarrass anybody on the city council floor. So for the past three years, that's what I've done. And this afternoon, I sent an email thanking the mayor and one of our attorneys for a proposal last night, a presentation last night, on this proposed plan to help our residents with their tax issues, and I listed a number of questions that I would like to have answered by people that weren't at the meeting last night when this was proposed, people like our finance director, people like our TIF attorney, who is the attorney responsible for these TIF districts that this money is supposedly going to come out of to pay for this proposal. So I apparently will not be able to get those questions answered, since this meeting is being called for a time that I am not going to be available for. Anybody that has any questions about where I stand on this and the questions that I have, I'm not hiding behind anything. You can call my office at 708-891-8196. You can email me at JPattin@calumetcity.org, or you can come talk to me after the meeting. I will gladly share the email that I sent with all of my questions and tell you exactly my thoughts on it right now, and, you know, those are subject to revision based on answers from the attorneys and the finance director.
Alderman Smith, city council reports.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I wanna remind the Seventh Ward residents that our monthly Seventh Ward Town Hall will... Ward Town Hall will be held Saturday, the seventeenth, next Saturday, from ten A.M. to noon. If you have any questions ahead of that time, please contact me by email at a smith@calumetcity.org, or contact the office at seven zero eight eight nine one eighty-one ninety-seven. Also, want to express my condolences for the loss, the death of Mr. Greleki. Mr. Greleki was a business owner. He owned an automotive shop for forty years in Calumet City. The address was located at one forty-eight hundred fifty-sixth Street. He retired in two thousand twenty-two. However, unfortunately, he just died. Residents described him as the most honest and kindest person you ever wanted to meet, so I just wanted to make sure that he gets an acknowledgement from the Alderman. And ask that you continue to keep his family in your prayers. Also, August the twenty-fourth, School Board one fifty-seven is having a back-to-school event. At that event, I will be attending and providing school supplies. If anyone in the ward is in need of school supplies, please contact the office. Please email your requests at seven zero eight, I'm sorry, a smith@calumetcity.org, or contact seven zero eight eight nine one eighty-one ninety-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Under the mayor's report, I have two items. I want to thank Congresswoman Robin Kelly. Congresswoman Kelly was here in Calumet City. She awarded Shrum School one point seven million dollar grant for the purchase of five electric vehicles. This is through a company that manufactures the vehicles in Illinois, made in Illinois, used for schools in Illinois, and it's a great thing that the Congresswoman came here. We had our police chief, fire chief, and many residents who came and supported the Congresswoman as well. But again, I want to congratulate Shrum School, the entire school board, for not only applying for the grant, but also working hard with Congresswoman Kelly to make sure that this grant was awarded to Shrum School. The next item, return to our engineer for update Matt on the Green Alley Program. Calumet City has been awarded one of the green communities in the state of Illinois. We got our green sign somewhere, and we want to thank our city treasurer for his support with all of the technology that we do with our electricity, but I believe the sign is somewhere. We got three up, and we have two here somewhere. But our Green Alley Program, can you please give us an update? I know your mic don't work, so the Alderman's gonna let you in here.
Thank you, Alderman. Update with the Green Alley projects, we got four alleys that were, went out to bid just recently. That project is funded by, in a partnership with the MWRD, and then the local match. We've actually worked out a partnership with Center for Neighborhood Technologies and Green Print, and they'll be contributing the twenty percent local match. Four alleys are being done this year. They are located in the First, Seventh, and Third and Fourth Wards this year. And that project is slated for kickoff. Right now, we're in the contract component of it, and it should be slated to start going to construction within about a week or so here. So that's the report I have for the Green Alleys. We're going to continue the program, and we got a couple other ones, too. They're lined up, ready to go in every ward, and we're going to try to submit, get that submitted for hopefully future consideration of funding, and just keep that program rolling, because we know that it's not into the tactical stormwater, but it helps out with bringing up, paving the alleys and making them nice for the community.
And this program costs the city of Calumet City absolutely nothing. We got, the match for the project was done by Green Partners. Is that the company?
It's Green Print. Green Print is a five oh one C three that is getting urban dollars through Cook County programs. So we have teamed up with these entities, and...
Thank you, Alderman. Green Print is, and CNT, are, we are partnered with them on these projects, and very excited about it with them in Cook County.
We're gonna call up Val Williams to give us more on our Green Print.
Oh, no, they were here today. That was the, what you saw outside today in front of City Hall, whenever collecting data from the residents.
Gotcha.
Yeah, to elaborate on what Ms. Williams from Community Economic Development had just alluded to, we're partnered up with Center for Neighborhood Technologies as part of the Rain Ready Program, to try and make, build resiliency for, against stormwater. This is a program that utilizes a steering committee to get community input. They meet at the library regularly, getting, you know, just some feedback on what we can implement to maybe try and combat some of the stormwater effects that we're experiencing that are becoming more and more pronounced every year. So we got some feedback with them. We got some other programs going, too. Right now, they're doing a design at Wentworth and Sibley. This will address some safety concerns, but also it's going to have some stormwater benefits, too, introducing bump outs, almost like, kind of like a complete street, so it kind of plays off of the city's complete streets ordinances, and then also off of our green infrastructure policies. So it has multi-benefit components of it.
Thank you, Matt, for the update. And also, Matt, do we have update? I know we have a lot of construction projects going on. People are seeing those projects. We got one hundred fifty-ninth Street. We also are doing streets. Can you elaborate on the streets that we have going on, construction, and also the construction projects?
Yeah, a quick update on the construction projects. Wilson Avenue, they were paving the surface course today, which is the final layer of asphalt, so the only work remaining on Wilson Avenue, Paxton to Yates, is going to be restoration work and then punch list items, too. So that road is substantially complete, you know, right now is where it sits. Hundred fifty-seventh had a couple of delays when we had that storm that came through mid-July that knocked out power to a lot of residents. It actually knocked one of the power poles, and it was leaning right next to Calumet City Bakery. ComEd came out and shut down the project for a couple of weeks, so that one had a couple of delays associated with the recent storm that came through. We are since able to get an assessment on that pole and identify. It's slated to get replaced. It'll get fixed by ComEd, but there are a lot permitting us to continue the work and continue proceeding with everything on the west leg of the hundred fifty-seventh project, which is from Superior to Burnham Avenue. There's also some utility relocations that are still underway by Nycor and ComEd for that segment. The east leg for a hundred fifty-seventh has experienced a, some other delays also as well. These mainly pertain to the sewers. Prior to the project, the sewers currently were a major component of the project, but we went out and televised those to get the status update on it. There is identified that there's four point locations that we needed to address. We've since addressed those, but when we peeled off the pavement, we found voids and sinkholes that required some schedule shifting in order to tackle those immediately. There's also been some lateral connections, and we're constantly coordinating. We were actually coordinating this morning, too, with Lincoln Elementary on the road project, but the road work is probably going to extend into October, just because of some of the concerns that we've experienced out there with respects to utilities, and then the sewer collapses, and we also had a water main break out there, too, which didn't help us either. So that's a hundred fifty-seventh. With respect to a hundred fifty-ninth, AKA River Oaks Road, they have, they're wrapping up the concrete work, and then you're going to see some of the paving for the smart overlay that's going to be coming down, and then same thing with Torrance Avenue, too. So that's the latest and greatest on the roads. Mayor, if there's any questions, more than happy to answer.
I have a question.
Alderman Wilson.
Seeing as, though, we all went through the September seventeen flood, but the Second Ward was hardest hit, why are we not getting any alleys? How, what was the process, so I can explain it to my constituents?
We just, we identified several different lists prior to even the September seventeen storm, so we have a couple that are programmed, actually, from the next wave that will be in, actually, the Second Ward. We actually did a submission for a partnership project with the MWRD this year, and we actually had two projects in the Second Ward. But we're not ignoring, we know that that's a big, big thing, and actually, working with Chief Ben Nelly, we are going after FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant money, big dollars, millions of dollars, to try and benefit the Second Ward and the northern part of Calumet City, so.
Okay.
We do have a big one, and they, we got through the first round of reviews, so that's a good, good sign, and now we're reviewing it and trying to take it to another level. And we were in coordination with MWRD also, too, so, and they're supporting our application, too, which is a big, big boom, hopefully, to maybe get them to really recognize this project as an outstanding one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Item eight on the agenda, informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Items eight, A through C, are there any questions regarding items eight, A through C? If not, can someone make a motion to approve items A through C and place them on file? Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. Alderman Faber?
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman. Items nine, one through eight, if the council can please make a motion to table items six, seven, and eight?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman to table items six, seven, eight. Is there a second?
Second for discussion, please.
Second for discussion by Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I guess, for clarity on my end, so I was looking into, I know we had an update on item seven yesterday, and can we, there were some questions I wanted to go over with our city engineers, and a recent report that had come out about that property. Can we, can we defer action on this until the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting? Can I make a motion just to?
Yeah, we just tabled it, Alderman, so we can, we can put it on the August twenty-second agenda.
So I'll just, just request it to be on that agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on the motion to table items six, seven, and eight?
Yes.
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 Items nine, one through five, is our request to the state of Illinois to allow the city of Calumet City to borrow money for our economic development plan and project. Our first plan will be a request from the Illinois Closing Fund or the Illinois Capital Development Fund, amount of forty million dollars for our intention to build a indoor-outdoor water park in Calumet City. Our second motion, item number two, would be to direct our finance director to start looking at financing for a new potential police and fire station. And then our third motion would be looking at a potential financing plan for a new public works facility. We are completed with phase one, phase two of the potential new public works facility. And of course, item four is looking to request money from the governor, again, for the water park. And the fifth motion is to direct our city attorney to look at a RFP for the demolition of Sears Building to make room for economic development plans in the city of Calumet City. I would ask the council to support these, and if they, if you want to take these motion by motion, or one motion, is there a motion, or? Item number one, nine, one, is there a motion to approve item number one on the agenda?
Second for discussion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Second by Alderman Patton for discussion.
These resolutions that we're drafting to the governor to, to ask to borrow these funds, so we draft a resolution, we send it to the governor, that's not accepting funds, it's not accepting terms of any funds, it's not agreeing to any of these projects, correct? It's just making the ask to see if the option is there?
Well, just like we borrowed money for, that we, our I E P A loan that we got for our water projects, it's the same similar process, where we're asking the governor to help Calumet City with our economic development plans. So we're directing the city attorney to draft up that resolution that will be on the future agenda.
Okay, this is just drafting it, okay.
What are the terms of the loan on that?
Once the city attorney drafts up the resolution, I'm sure it'd be terms, just like any intergovernment agreement that we enter into. The city council has to accept the money, and we probably should have had this on some of the grant money that we accepted as well, like a resolution accepting that grant money, so Mr. Mark will ask you to put that language in the resolution that we create.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So item one has a motion, and the second, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll on item number one?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Alderman. Item number two, motion to, for direct the finance director, city attorney, to start financing plan for construction of a new police and fire station. Is there a motion to approve item number two on the agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Alderman. Item three on the agenda is a motion to direct our finance at Community Economic Development and the city treasurer to begin a financing plan for construction of a new public works facility. Is there a motion to approve item number three?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Alderman Navarrete.
Thank you. I know we, I know it was announced on a few occasions that we have a grant for a public works facility. Do, do we know, is this for the gap in, in financing, or do we know what that gap looks like?
No, that's what John is going to have to come up with. John has come up and talked about the creative ideas for, to close that gap, but John would have to bring that to us. We still working out what the numbers would be for the new public works facility. We got the, the drawings, the phase one and phase two done, and now it's just now time to come up with the financing.
Okay, so the grant will be incorporated into this financing plan?
Yes.
With the gap? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on item number three?
Yes.
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 Item number four is actually a duplicate motion, so is there a motion? I guess we don't have to take action on item number four. Is, it's not duplicate?
Yeah, it's not duplicate.
Item number four, is there a motion to approve item number four on the agenda? Motion made by Alderman Smith.
Second for discussion.
Second by Alderman Patton.
If we were thinking it was a duplicate and we wanted to remove it, is it the intention, is it your intention to have both of them passed?
No, Alderman, it's the intention to go with item number one.
Then I withdraw my second.
Motion withdrawn by Alderman Patton. Alderman Smith, withdraw the motion. It's two.
Like to make a motion to remove item number four from the agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Smith, to remove item number four from the agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll call on that?
Yes.
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 Item number five on the agenda is a motion to direct our city attorney and engineers, economic development, to draft a RFP for the potential demolition of the Sears Building to make room of construction of an indoor-outdoor water park in Calumet City.
Mayor, can I make a? I don't think anyone had any questions, but I was just going to make a motion... I don't think anyone had any questions, but I was just going to make a motion to strike. I mean, just have the demolition, RFP for demolition of the Sears Building and just strike to make room for construction of an indoor-outdoor water park facility in Calumet City.
Motion made by Alderman Navarrete. Is there a second to that motion?
A second for discussion.
He's just amending striking language, Alderman.
Good. This is just going out, is this drafting the RFP or putting the RFP out there?
Drafting the RFP. Correct, Alderman Navarrete. Your motion was to draft the RFP, report back.
To draft the RFP.
Not to advertise it, not to, not to put it out there yet.
Right, I mean, we could review the process though. So once it's drafted, maybe the attorney, once it's drafted, does that come back to the council it's supposed to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there've been numbers bantered around about how much it would cost to demolish Sears. And we want to make sure we get accurate numbers. The first number we got was close to $860,000 and then those numbers went up to a million dollars. So we want to make sure that those numbers are accurate that we can get for the demolition.
Yeah, I think it goes along with the environmental sampling on item 13. That's going to drive that cost, whether there's a justice there or not, or how much.
Yes. So we have a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on item number five? This is just striking the language for the construction of an indoor-outdoor water park. So the minute, the motion is to direct the city attorney engineers to draft the RFP for the demolition of Sears Building. Yes.
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 Give me a minute. Items nine through?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Are there any questions regarding items nine through fourteen? If not, is there a motion to approve items nine through fourteen?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll on items nineteen through fourteen?
Yes.
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 Resolutions and ordinances. Alderman Tillman, just got a message from Alderman, I mean, from Attorney Dominic requesting that we table item number one, three, four. And it will be on the August 22nd agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to table items one, three, and four under new business resolutions and ordinances.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Patton to table items one, three, and four. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Alderman Tillman, action on item number two and five.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items two and five under new business resolutions and ordinances.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 At this time, we'd like to call for a executive session to deal with the employment of specific individual, pending litigation, potential litigation, and purchase of real estate property. Is there a motion to go into executive session at seven o'clock? We don't anticipate a long executive session. So is there a motion to go into executive session at seven o'clock?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Tillman to go into executive session at 7:00 PM. All in favor? We're in executive session, everyone, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Cameraman, can you turn the music on, please? And we will be right back, everyone. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 7:19 PM?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
So. So it is very hard for Virgo to apologize. Let me start off with that. It is hard for Virgo to apologize. And I'm no different. And tonight, I double dogged the city council to take up a tax proposal that has many questions. And I would like to personally apologize, start off with Alderman Patton, and anyone I offended by my double dog comments. I am emotional. I love the tax plan, but the better part of me should have continued some of the camaraderie that we built and also some of the things that we built. So I apologize, Alderman Patton. I apologize to any Alderman I offended with my comments. And I would suggest that the cameraman stop the tape now. I'm joking, I'm joking. But I want to, I want to make sure that I apologize and let you know that I'm sorry for the comments I made. I was emotional, but I also want to make sure that the council understands that we have been working together. We worked together past solid budget, balanced budget. We worked together tonight to move forward economic development proposals. But the start of the meeting was not how I wanted to start it and I apologize. So hopefully, Alderman, anyone got offended, accept my apologies. And Mr. Tape Man, Mr. Cameraman, we will work to erase the tape.
Thank you. Well, I'm an Aquarius and I don't know what any of that means, but I'm also Irish. So I understand what it's like to have a temper. So I appreciate that, Mayor. And, you know, I'd just like to reiterate the things that I have, you know, put in email and asked about this. It has nothing to do with whose idea this is or, or anything like that. It's, it's about the long-term financial health of the city and just making sure that we make good decisions and we have all the information to do it. And so I had no intent on offending anybody by asking these questions. And like I said, anybody that, that has any questions about where I'm at with this, feel free to reach out to me. But thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. And if the 14 doesn't work, we'll work on another date because we want to make sure that all Aldermen are present so we can make sure that we do this for our residents. So I appreciate that. And if the 14 is not available, we'll send it to everyone to make sure a date that everyone can attend. We're under item 11, financial matters. Alderman Gardner for a motion to remove item?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to remove item number 34.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Patton to remove item number 34. All in favor to remove item number 34 from the agenda?
Aye.
Alderman Gardner on the?
Mayor, also, also, I want to make a motion to remove item 33. We previously approved this at a, at the past meeting.
Okay, yes, we did, Alderman, sorry. Alderman Tillman with a motion to remove item number 33. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. All in favor to remove item number 33?
Aye. Got a question about 30. Is the Treasury Office signing, do we take care of registration?
Yeah, for all those attending. For all of those attending the Illinois Municipal League Conferences, if you could let someone in our office know that you'll be attending, either by email or by telephone call, you can call me. And then we'll, we'll register everyone interested for the conference. And then we'll issue the per diem checks probably a week to 10 days prior to the conference.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Alderman Gardner for a motion on the remaining financial matters?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Is there a second?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm sorry. And items number 35 through 38 as so presented.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll? Yes.
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 I can vote twice tonight, though? Yes.
A double dog matter.
That will be a bolt.
Unfinished business, Alderman Smith. No unfinished business. Unfinished business, Alderman Patton.
Thank you. I know these are not televised live anymore, but they are rebroadcast, I believe, on Mondays. There's a record of it on tape and there's at least 25 people in this room. So I'd be dead if I didn't say I would like to wish my wife Molly a happy anniversary. Our anniversary is coming up this Saturday and hopefully one of you will at least tell her that I said it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Gardner?
Nothing at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Williams?
Just real quick, I want to give a sneak plug to South Bourbon College. And anyone that interested in the criminal justice program, I am delving into the waters of instructing. So if anyone interested in taking classes, I will be teaching at South Bourbon College in security administration. So please pass it on. I am teaching, yes.
I'm signing up for that class.
I need nine more students, nine more students is all I need for the class to go for. But thank you, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Tillman, unfinished business?
In line with Alderman Patton, I guess I should mention that it is my parents' anniversary next week. Happy 37th anniversary, Director Tillman.
Thank you, Alderman. Second ward, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Tillman, Mr. and Mrs. Patton, on your anniversaries. Congratulations to Pastor Christopher Montgomery for being elevated to vicar, Montgomery. So we have an authoritative faith leader in the second ward. Higher Ground Community Church has been renamed to New Life Bible Church of Calumet City under his leadership. And he is the one that will have and host the back-to-school event at 4:15 Saginaw on August 31st, starting at 11:00 AM. Again, I wanted to review two dates. August 10th, this Saturday, is our second ward meeting, noon to 2:00, 1424 Pulaski. Bring your chair. August 17th, at the VFW, from noon to 4:00, is the second ward Vision of We Awards. And it's a brunch. We ask that you, the attire is all black with pops of orange, sort of like how I'm dressed today. Bring your best and come celebrate our heroes from the community. Second ward, you are sending abandoned car removal request. I'm going to ask that you continue to call the police department. There is a, a process. They will come identify the car, tag it. It has to sit so many days before it is removed. But if you do not call the police, it's like it never happened. See something, say something, please call the police. I have received during executive session the text messages regarding Buddy Bear Car Wash. I do know that we have some signs that are going up, but I will speak with the Chair of Ordnance and Resolutions to see what we can do to reduce that noise and that nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Navarrete, unfinished business?
Thank you, Mayor. Just respectfully requesting update on the drafting of a RFP for Economic Development Director search that attorneys had drafted. Just, just an update.
I have it on my notes, Alderman.
Oh, thank you.
So Attorney Mark? Please provide the Alderman with an update on the, I know you sent me information. So if you can provide Alderman Navar? Economic Direct, Development Director.
Thank you, that's all I'll say, that's all I'll say, thank you.
All right, there being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at 7:29 PM? Motion made by Alderman Williams to adjourn, is there a second? Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor? Meeting adjourned at 7:29 PM. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, everyone.